This conference will now be recorded.
United States of America and the Republic of America, which stands on a nation and in this world, there is even justice.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. What else? We can leave it.
I don't have anything specifically to say. Like, there's a lot of people here, so something that takes more time, probably than you got to mention. Um, I do, uh, if I'm not wrong, I've got some court hearings. This one. One time, folks, in their, um, for maybe get there. Um, and, um, I guess that's about, um, oh, I'm trying to think of that. They had, I think, I think I tried to contact you on this and they'll put the time fly for a couple of months. I lost, uh, some invoices that I think were supposed to. My cat is on the chat. No, no, I mean, okay. Um, yeah, I have got them. I'll fix it. Better than nine. You want me to contact as well? I just, whatever you think we should do like this. I mind, but what would we have to do? Well, I said, you know, on one hand, you would say, well, you guys want the money, you need to cooperate with us. On the other hand, they're going to say, well, yeah, we can make life different. So, um, I just get a hold of and say, here, guys, what's the deal? You know, we owe you money, but you just take it all. I won't say we don't owe you the money, but, you know, um, and just, um, see if I can.
Or do, do we just simply pay the amount without the, the tax?
Well, yeah, that's, um, definitely an option, and I've, I've done that before. And I mean, not in this context, but, uh, in my practice, I have before sent a check saying, um, your amount's too high, this is the right amount, and see if they cash it. If they cash it, then you get into different issues of whether, in this case, I don't think it would matter because we're talking about tax and that this company doesn't necessarily care about that, you want to state, but, um, you know, sometimes you get into an issue of, so if, uh, somebody, private business sends me a, a bill for $2,000, and I think I only owe them $1,500, um, I might send them a check for 1,500 bucks and say, here you go. Um, if they cash it, then the question becomes, well, have they just accepted that as full payment, or are they just simply saying, no, this is partial payment, we're going to come out with the rest? That gets a little dicey. Um, so a lot of times, what I've done in the past is I'll, I'll send the check, I'll send a, a letter with it and say, and I just want you guys to know, uh, I intend this as full payment, uh, as an accord of satisfaction, so if you cash it, there's no more coming. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they, it's not like what I say goes, so it's not like they could, it's not like maybe they couldn't try and get the rest from me, but it makes it a lot harder, right? I mean, if I end up front of a judge, you know, and I'm saying, well, look, I told them this is how much I was paying, and, and I wasn't going to pay anymore, and if they accepted this, that's it, and they accepted it, so that's it, Judge, I'm more likely to win. In this case, I don't, since we're talking about the tax issue, so I probably wouldn't go into that much detail.
Or you want to think about what we should do in the invoices? What we should do?
Yeah, I, I think what I'll do, and I'll send myself an email when I get back to my chair there, um, I think I'll contact them and just, and probably, and just say, um, you know, I know the supervisors are trying to get ahold of you, um, what's your, you know, bring up the issue and say, you know, what's your response? See if they respond to me. And, um, you know, anymore, it seems like it's impossible to get anybody on the phone, right? So, you know, certainly try and call them too, but you need to know the, uh, I guess
it's the sales guy, and he's, he's been, he's been easy to get ahold of, and, uh, so I can show you which one of those he is.
And that would be fine, and, and may I get through somebody to person, personally, and just find out what they're hiding this.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay? Anybody else have anything? All righty. All right. Thank you.
Sheriff update, I don't see the sheriff in today, so any department ed discussion? Hey, engineer.
Real quick, um, getting some projects, trying to get some projects turned in, getting line and kiln plans put together for next year, actually for a letting here, it'll probably be in June. Um, still need to get something done on March Avenue, Northwood Road, south yet, for a small, little overlay project on that, uh, pavement there. Um, one other thing we have, I'm going to be gone Wednesday and Thursday, uh, for a federal aid meeting down in Sioux Rapids, so I'll have my phone if anything happens, but mostly being in, uh, training sessions for that in two days, so. That's all I've got, I know the crew's out, trying to maybe do some brush cutting, so whether it's a little bit more favorable, we'll be outside, so.
Any thought on, uh, two-foot shoulders on any of these things we're doing? Starting to, starting to go that route?
Um, oh, paving.
Any of the things that we're starting to redo on paving?
Yeah. Um, on, uh, maybe where we have the right way to do it, like, probably not enough for to put two-foot shoulders on, but some of these major projects coming up, we can look at paving a little bit more of what might be, used to be granular, you got to kind of be careful, depending on what we do, depending what product we use, you know, you got concrete, you need that much more room for the paper, but, um, asphalt, we can, and we can probably minimize, you know, we add two-foot shoulders on everything, that helps minimize the drop off, uh, for truck, cars, and it minimizes our maintenance too, so it's not a bad idea, but on some of the stuff, where we can fit it in, we will, just kind of keep in mind it adds, it adds more cost.
I realize that.
But it also, the benefit also is less maintenance, so.
Right, if you're proposing a sound state, so, I know the state, that's kind of their standard now, and it's, it's just a much better driving.
Yeah, well, what we, what we can kind of start considering is maybe paving at, at least a minimum, maybe of a foot, just to get better edge support. Um, two, if we've got room for it, depending on what we're doing for product, and we have in the last, I don't know how many years, just paving intersections have made a big difference, and keeping rock off the highways too, so very proud if you look at it, what we've got. Yep. That's all I've got for you, unless you guys have any questions.
Okay. MCRHC update.
Are you going to sit there? Please, now, you. John, you want that on?
Yes.
Good having great. We'll try. Sorry. No, you need to, it's, it's obviously a lot more than that.
Squad, did you check it out?
Yes. You see what preference the chairman would give.
Yes.
Do they need the mouse?
Um, maybe, yes. If anyone can tell. Is it, do I roll it or click it? I'll check now.
We'll see what it does.
All right. Um, you can't see it yet, can you?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, we started something up there.
Let me turn on the light up there.
Let's see if you're going to enjoy it.
So. Says it's sharing. Well.
Yeah. Up there.
All right, so, can you advance from over there, Rachel? What, can you advance it from over there? Because it's not, it's not, I can't read what that said. Does that say anything? Oh, next. Okay. Yes, okay. All right, well, thanks for allowing us to come today and talk to you a little bit about our fiscal '23. So we haven't included, um, anything from fiscal '24, um, and obviously, we're over halfway through fiscal '24 already, so, um, so again, we're just going to provide an update on some of the things that have been happening across the Michoacan Regional Health Center, and, um, Gina's going to provide an update on our financials, and Betty's going to provide an update on our, uh, changes in our board. So, in fiscal '23, uh, Mitchell County Regional Health Center was awarded, uh, top 100 critical access hospital, again, uh, there are about 1,600 critical access hospitals in the nation, and we were listed in the top, uh, 100, so we're very proud of that. Also, in 2023, we were awarded a performance leadership award, uh, for excellence in quality, and that was in November as part of the National Rural Health Day. Uh, we were also awarded, uh, 2023 Performance Leadership Award in Excellence in Patient Perspective for Patient Care, and, uh, in November of 2023. And finally, we, uh, the, the, I guess the presentation or the conference for Press Gany is in February, and, uh, which is, uh, close here, and so we were awarded a Press Gany National Award called the Guardian of Excellence, and it's for, uh, being in the 95th percentile for your emergency room experience for patients, and so you have to, uh, have been in the 95th percentile for a number of quarters, and so we have a few people heading out to Orlando to accept that award, uh, around our emergency room experience. Okay. So, a few things we've got going, obviously, rotations for medical students, residents, nurse practitioners is part of our recruitment strategy, uh, and in 2023, we hosted one resident, six medical students, four nurse practitioners. We accept students from, uh, DMU, we take residents from Broadbonds, from the University of Iowa, um, and, well, Mercy, if we could get them, we, we're still working on that. Um, and so we take nurse practitioners from a number of different schools, uh, across the state, and actually, in Minnesota as well. And, uh, fiscal 2024, we've already scheduled four nurse practitioners and one medical student. We currently have a medical student from Mason City Clear Lake, he's a third year, and he'll be with Dr. Harkins and Dr. Peterson for the next month, so we're excited to welcome him. Uh, and we currently have an offer out to one resident, he is a first-year resident at Genesis, and so he would be able to join us in 2026, and we hope to make another offer out this spring for another resident who will be available in 2025, he's currently, um, at Iowa Lutheran Residency Program. So he's, should be scheduling a rotation for coming up pretty quickly. Any questions? All right, so, every year, uh, obviously, we look at our employee engagement score, our provider engagement scores, because that's just part of our ongoing strategy to, one, be a great place to work, and, two, um, obviously, we look at Press Gany for our employee satisfaction as well, so those are key areas for us, uh, as we, you know, enter each year. So, our employee engagement score was a 4.48 on a five-point scale this past year, and so we're very proud of that. We had the highest employee engagement score in North Iowa, we also had the science, the second highest employee engagement score, uh, in the entire Mercy One Network. We, uh, we had a 93% participation rate from employees, and, uh, we were in the 96th percentile nationwide for employee engagement, and so, um, we were, again, very happy with those results. So, when it came to the providers, so, again, we survey all the providers, and that includes our nurse practitioners, our physician assistants, our DOs, our MDs, um, and so, on the provider engagement score, we had a 4.77 on a five-point scale. We had the second highest provider engagement score in North Iowa, and had the third highest provider engagement score in the entire Mercy One Network, and nationally, we were at the 97th percentile in the nation with, for our physician satisfaction or our provider engagement score, so, again, we're very happy with that. So, the SHINGO assessment is, it's, um, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, but it would be comparable to like a balderidge, and so, what you do with a SHINGO assessment is it's a cultural assessment, and it measures basically how well your team members work together, um, it asks, it, uh, you ask specific questions about, how do you know when you're ahead, how do you know when you're behind? And so, there's four different dimensions, there are cultural, cultural enablers, and what that looks at is, do we have an organization filled with problem solvers? People who, if there's a problem, do they know what to do, how do they solve those problems? And so, that's kind of the base, you know, if you think about the Maslow's hierarchy, it's like the, you want an organization filled with people who know what to do, um, if something's not right, or something needs to change. Continuous process improvement is another, uh, dimension. Enterprise alignment, how well, um, how, do our employees know our strategies? Do our employees, different departments, how well do they work together? And, you know, we oftentimes talk about this within our organization, where, you know, we have a multitude of departments set up under one roof, well, actually, more than one roof, but, um, and, and so, how well do we work together? Because a patient experience begins when they call and make the appointment, and so we want to make sure that when patients are calling, uh, and making that appointment, what does a parking lot look like? That is an ongoing challenge that we have, um, at the, you know, what was their experience when they came in and registered? What was their experience when they saw the nurse or the provider? What was their experience when we went to lab? And so, we have many small departments working together, and so, if, if, um, a label doesn't print to the lab, the lab staff don't know to come pick up the patient in the venue, so it is, it's a team effort, uh, and everybody's important, and trying to figure out how do we work together closely, and that's part of the enterprise alignment. And then finally, the results, that's kind of the principle for the self-actualization of the Maslow. And, um, so, you can see, we started doing this seven years ago, so you can see where we started in. And what's actually difficult to see is where the overall total is 1.74, that year was 2014. Yeah. And so then, as you go across the top, those are different years that the SHINGO assessment was performed. Yeah, you can't see the dates. Yes, so with the very last year being 2023, there in the green, and that total score is hard to see, it is a 3.80. Thank you. So, basically, you see, we see incremental improvement, 1.74, 2.46, 2.48, um, and finally, ending up at the 3.80 last year. So, um, again, this is something that we look at every year, try to look at every year, we didn't do it in 2020, um, just to see where we are as an organization, and so, the best part about this is we've had area industry come in and do this SHINGO assessment for us, so it's not us evaluating ourselves, so we have people, um, from different, uh, different communities, as well as, um, some people, we had some people from Fox River this year, uh, I'm trying to remember who else, and then we had other people from the network. So, uh, it's, it's, it's a nice assessment that we're not judging it, someone else is coming in and judging it for us, so. All right, so, we have a lot of things going on, uh, the laboratory, so our laboratory is, well, you, you guys know we have some space constraints, uh, both just from our footprint, uh, and being somewhat in a residential area, and, um, so we're always trying to figure out how do we expand, make more room with the limited space that we have. So, there is a courtyard in the middle of the building, and it won't be there next year, and so, we're going to take that for our lab, and so, it's really, literally right across from the lab, and so that's going to be our draw room, and so what will happen is we'll move, um, our draw room area out of the regular lab, across the hall, we'll have, again, three, I think it's three, uh, draw rooms, a restroom, and that will free up additional space. COVID brought a whole lot of additional testing, and, um, and so, we're, uh, we have a lot of space constraint, which your wife could probably, uh, attest to, and so, that will hopefully free up some of that space. Uh, physical therapy, despite the fact that we more than doubled our physical therapy space, we've outgrown that, and we've hired, we have another physical therapist coming onboard, hopefully in February, we've signed her in maybe December, but she still has to take her boards, so we'll have three full-time, uh, physical therapists, we have two, they're not full-time occupational therapists, and now we have two, again, not both full-time speech therapists, so, uh, we've seen a, a significant increase in our pediatric population, and, uh, we've just had, it's just been growing, uh, very nicely, and so, what we've discovered is we didn't account for all those extra people, and so we need additional exam rooms, so we're adding a couple exam rooms sort of out by that gym area, uh, to try to, you know, make do for now. Obviously, we have the Riceville Clinic and the pharmacy that we'll be building, uh, in, in 2024. If you recall, we submitted a grant, uh, to the USDA, we were, we did not hear back for, um, almost a year, and so we found out we were awarded a $662,000 grant, we rebid the project, the project went up $750,000 from the initial bid from, uh, 2021, and, um, and so, but we are committed to finishing this project by the end of December, according to the USDA, that should go out to bid anytime right now, uh, maybe early February, um, we're waiting for one piece of information from the USDA, so we're learning a lot through that process now, and, um, and so, more to come. So, again, the pharmacy that closed in Riceville, we will reopen in Riceville, I think, within the clinic, so we did make some modifications to that building to accommodate any pharmacy there, and, um, so we're excited about that. It's not really significant growth, we're not adding, obviously, we'll have the same lab services that we currently have, um, but we're not adding radiology or anything like that, it's very costly to add some of those imaging services, um, but it will be a new clinic, uh, the clinic itself is also, uh, will be built in such a way that we'll be able to isolate patients who have perhaps COVID or other communicable, um, diseases or illnesses, and so we can isolate, um, from the rest of the building, and so that's part of that design. And in October of 2023, we did purchase the St. Andrew Pharmacy, and we will have the St. Andrew pharmacist also provide tele, telepharmacy services to the Riceville Clinic at the same time, so that's, um, part of that process as well. Any questions about that? I have a picture here too. So that's what it's going to look like. Again, it's on Woodland Avenue, across from the Runde's, um, commercial building, the Runde's donated the property to Mitchell County Regional Health Center, so we're extremely thankful to the Runde family for their generous donation of the property, and, uh, we're going to be doing some fundraising about, uh, around the Riceville Clinic too, but we're excited, the pharmacy will be right in the front there as you come in, because our, our hours may not always match up, and so we need to be able to lock down the rest of the clinic when the pharmacy's open, and, so, yeah. Any questions about that or else?
Is that going to be a full-time clinic, or?
And so, right now, the clinic is not open full-time, it's open, we have someone there every day, um, and so we have coverage half-day Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday's all-day, and then half-day Thursday and Friday. And so, going forward, we also have Dr. Gertz there too, so she's there on Thursdays and every other Thursday, I think, and so, so the hours do vary, we're not, at this point, uh, planning to extend the hours, obviously, if we see the growth, then that could be a potential down the road, but right now, we're just doing it, you know, to maintain the current hours that we have. Great question, thank you.
The pharmacy will be open more?
Yes, the pharmacy, yeah. Any other questions? All right. All right, I'm kicking it over to Gina.
So, um, I'm actually just going to kind of provide you just, uh, some visuals today to help, uh, show you a little bit how we're performing in comparison, uh, to some of the other facilities, you know, whether it be even just, uh, from a benchmarking against Mercy, uh, or even just some of our other more local, uh, hospitals as well, um, you know, regardless of what benchmarking I show you, I'm happy to share that our performance is, um, always going to be looking well, uh, we continue to have a really good operation that we're, we're, we're doing here at Mitchell County Regional Health Center, our performance is obviously credited to our committed doctors, um, as well as those providers, staff, our stable leadership team, and our supportive community for choosing MCRHC, uh, for their trusted healthcare partners, so, uh, this is just a slide, um, actually, it's a, it's a Mercy One slide, we did actually pull up, um, all of the different sites, but there's 27 hospitals here that are represented in, um, an operating margin here as of June 30 of 2023, um, obviously, the goal is showing a desire to be over 1% operating margin, uh, the sites in green are those that are performing above that threshold, whereas all of the red are operating at a negative operating margin, so, um, we are the blue, um, arrow is, is what is represented there, I think we're around a four, um, four and a half percent there before, uh, the audit, so these are before the audited financials came out, but just kind of to give you an idea of what the landscape looked like for fiscal '23, it's been, you know, a rough, uh, last several years, uh, for healthcare, um, where a lot of the facilities, you know, pre-COVID were doing well, you know, there's maybe a little bit of recovery, uh, initially past the COVID, um, but then, uh, you're starting to see a drop again in some of the performance, so, uh, there's a smaller graph that inset within there as well, that actually gives from fiscal '19, '20, '21, '22, and '23, those are all little operating margins, Shelley, can you kind of just circle that right there? It's that middle section. Yeah. Um, those are all negative operating margins, anywhere from a negative 2 to a negative 1.9, it got to, the narrowest one was a negative 0.2% operating margin, but nonetheless, right now, on average, um, it is a 1.6, uh, in the negatives, so.
Can I just add something? Yeah, so, one of the things, obviously, that has been problematic within just healthcare across the US, but, um, Iowa, I know, the Iowa Hospital Association sent out a survey recently to try to capture what, what hospitals are spending in contract labor, so that's contract labor for nurses, could be physicians, could be, you know, obviously, locums, lab techs, rent, radiology techs, all of it, um, in, in fiscal '22, $574 million was spent in Iowa on, uh, additional contract labor, and last year, it did come down a little bit to about $474 million, so, contract labor is probably one of the biggest, uh, issues around the performance, um, financially, as well as supply costs, I think, you guys all see the supply costs and the, the cost of the store, that's, that's part of the financial problems that people have had. Okay, sorry.
Yep. There we go. Um, so for financial performance, operating margin, fiscal '23, we ended up at a 5% operating margin compared to fiscal '22 was a 5.9%. with a five point nine percent operating margin. So I've got a little graph in here, and so just, we're in a unique position in that, you know, as a government facility, you know, our financials actually become public. They get filed with the state auditor down in Des Moines, as do the other government sites in the area. So I've actually taken, or we've actually taken and benchmarked ourselves against some of our competitors here in the North Iowa area. And actually, none of these competitors that I've benchmarked us against are Mercy-affiliated sites. So you can come up with your own conclusions who they might be.
But we have to be governmental.
And they are governmental facilities. There are critical access hospitals as well. So, you know, we are kind of a unique group of different types of hospitals that, you know, so your Mercy hospital is on a different kind of payment structure, so they're not critical access. It's, it's like us and, and a lot of your rural, rural sites. But nonetheless, we are the smallest actually in net revenues represented in these next few graphs that I'm going to show you. We're the solid blue line that you can see here. It's kind of mainly at the top over the course of the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three in operating margin. The other sites then are bigger than us, with the, with the biggest site being about an eighty-one point eight million dollar net operating revenue. So again, they're about double the size of what we are. And I just want to have you keep that in mind as we go through these next few slides, you know, kind of how we compare to somebody who's that much bigger than what we are too. So again, we're the smallest of the five community or county hospitals that I am showing here. We did choose not to list them out specifically. But again, county hospital and us public hospitals, our, our audited financials are out on the state auditor's website. And we're actually, you know, you can actually, all of the hospitals in the state of Iowa that are, are government-owned are out there. We're in a unique position because about fifty percent of the hospitals are owned under a government agreement, whereas like maybe eighteen percent are nationally. So in Iowa, we're just a little different there, so just wanted to share that as well. One of the components though that we're always going to try to take and factor into the performance of as well is the sixty-eight adjustment, which is related to the IFRS. And I think you guys maybe remember me talking about it last year, where it, it's more or less a required entry that we have to make as part of our audit related to the, our portion of the unfunded portion of IFRS, in essence. But what happened was a few years ago, IFRS became fully funded. And so what used to be an additional expense that we recorded to our bottom line on June thirty with our audited financials, we actually received a credit adjustment, so a, a reduction in our expenses. And so whereas last year, we actually processed a credit of one point four million against our financials, so inflating our operating margin. This year, a credit still flowed through because of, it's like a five-year amortization that occurs with that adjustment. So we had over a million dollar credit adjustment for our IFRS GASB adjustment as well. It's a non-cash entry. It just gets recorded again because of, of, of the audit. But nonetheless, all of the hospitals see that as well, and we all kind of have a different, you know, ratio per se. So in order to really kind of look at our actual performance of our operations, you kind of have to take that out of the, the financials. And so you actually can do that if you're able to pull specifically from the audited financials. It, it allows you to do that if you're looking at what is filed with the state. You know, we'd love to compare ourselves with Mayo or Austin as well, because I mean, they're direct competitors with us, as well as Mercy. But the reporting isn't quite as easy for us to obtain. And then the lag that would occur too in trying to get the reporting that we needed would kind of not be as timely. So this gave us a great comparison because, again, we're able to pull their fiscal twenty-three audited financials as well. But what you can see here then is everybody's performance is pretty standard here in fiscal nineteen. And then you see the drop that occurred with Covid. And then the recovery then that pretty much transpired post-Covid in fiscal twenty-one. And then coming up here, you know, pretty much everybody kind of, you know, tapered off and still had a little growth in fiscal twenty-two. And then the majority of these sites saw a drop in fiscal twenty-three. You can just see Mitchell County Regional Health Center here stayed pretty steady between these three years with a very somewhat flat operating margin. And again, operating margin is really where we want to be. We don't want to rely on, on that tax support to bring us into a positive. We want to make sure our operations are running, you know, in, in the blacks, that's for sure. From a total margin standpoint, so again, this would encompass any tax support the hospitals received, as well as you can see the huge spike that occurred in, in fiscal twenty-one. That's pretty much the recognition of a lot of those Covid funds that we all received. Some of the sites actually also, including Mitchell County, received PPP funds, which were the Paycheck Protection Program, as well as investment, interest, interest on investments flows through that total margin as well. So again, just a real big spike here for everybody. Our, our fiscal twenty-two total margin was nine point three percent with a ten point eight percent in fiscal twenty-three. Primarily, that ten point eight is really attributed to interest on our investments, because we are carrying a lot of cash right now. And obviously, you know, thank you to the banking industry. Yeah. We appreciate the interest that we're getting on those funds. Another indicator that we have for performance then is related And so, you know, with having a positive operating margin and, and total margin, of course, we're generating cash flow. And so we're seeing some of the highest days of cash on hand that we've seen in a long time, or pretty much ever actually. As well as some of the other sites too. So you can see, everybody's days cash on hand has gone up over the time. Ours continues to grow. Now, we haven't done any large projects here recently. Now we're already doing some discussions of building projects. So we anticipate seeing our days come down, and we've seen them already come down here a little bit. But nonetheless, when you've got, you know, positive operating margins going on, it's really about, show me the money. And here, you know, we're, we're able to show the money because we've got these days cash that are accumulating as well. Another financial performance indicator that we utilize for our board and for ourselves is net days in AR. So the more money that we've got sitting in AR, it's not sitting in our bank and earning interest. And so it's important that we've got a, a good solid process in which when a patient comes and sees the provider, that we've got a good turnaround in which that bill is going out and the bill is getting paid by the insurance and the accounts are getting resolved. And that days in AR, a low number is always good. So you can see where things kind of are, were a little higher back here in fiscal nineteen. And I can tell you, we had a software conversion that actually occurred that year. And so we were a little on the higher side, but you can see we, we continually have dropped. And really, we're at a level right now that you would consider to be gold standard. And in the benchmarking that our auditors put out with the comparison with their clients, we are the gold standard in about a thirty-five to forty-day range with the turnaround of payments occurring on the accounts after the services. One of the last slides I have here too with the comparison with these other sites is related to the average age of plant. So, you know, how much are you reinvesting within to your plant, whether it be equipment, technology, or building projects? So, you know, it's important that you keep up with, with doing those projects in order to keep that average age low. So really, about a ten-year average is kind of the goal. And that's so right about here is where you can see that we're running somewhere around eleven at this point. So it's time to do a project again at this point. But again, we're, we're running on that lower side of everything. I mean, really, to get it low, low, you'd have to probably start fresh and build a brand-new facility. And that's obviously not going to happen by any means. So, but continuing to just reinvest within your organization, doing some of those projects. Again, getting large new equipment, I'm talking more about CTs. Staying current with that technology, staying current with MRI technology. Right now, we're still bringing in an MRI truck for those images. And so eventually, you know, you're going to hear us that we're going to be looking at trying to bring MRI in-house. That is a goal, I would say, within the next five years. So if there's a little bit of project, I would probably have to help with that as well. But so we're running at ten point four right now with last year being nine. And this is kind of a tag on to Gina around the MRI. So a new, in an MRI unit, the magnet has to be on an exterior wall. And so that means it's been, it's like in some sort of, I think that demo, but some sort of building changes in order to accommodate a compact MRI. So more to come throughout that. But it's our, you know, it's our positive performance financially and our tax support that allows us to do these projects. That's, that's important. So as we kind of just recap our fiscal twenty twenty-three, net revenues increased seven point seven six percent over the prior year. Our clinic volumes continue to grow as well as our surgeries. And we'll, we'll have to continue to be, they're our gateway to additional services. So again, if our clinic is growing, it's helping grow those imaging. It's growing our surgeries, actually growing our surgeries too. It's growing our lab services, it's growing our therapy services. So that's an important growth area for us, as well as, you know, having the general surgery and then the orthopedics occurring here at our facility, those, that's a big deal for us. The combination of those two, again, the imaging that goes along with providing those services as well as some of the therapy, that is why we've seen the growth that we've had and why we're talking about adding additional physical therapists is because that's where the need has been. The last thing to share then is our investment income actually increased seven hundred and fifty-six percent over the prior year. I mean, it's just, again, that has been just a thank you to the banking industry for your contribution with that. On the expense side of things, expenses increased seven point five two percent over the prior year. Our wages, we actually made some pretty significant changes to wages in fiscal twenty twenty-three. We processed a four and a quarter percent wage increase on July first of twenty-two. We receive a comparative analysis with Iowa Hospital Association that gives us an idea of where our wages fall in comparison with all the other facilities that report. And we identified that we're still probably lagging behind in different areas. And really, just to address things as well as some of the inflation that was occurring at that time, we've also been processed a mid-year adjustment of a dollar a quarter to everyone on January first of twenty twenty-three in order to try to kind of catch up and stay ahead. Because in essence, it wasn't just about being, you know, where the rest of everyone was at. We still just want to be a little bit ahead of where everyone else is at. We want to be a leader in, in setting, whether it be performance of the facility, but also be a leader in establishing our fair wages. We also migrated to a self-insured health insurance plan on January first of twenty twenty-three. This was new for us. Jumped in after having several years of very positive performance with our health insurance. We had the cash reserves available, so we felt really confident in making that transition. Had a, we still participate as part of a trust through the Iowa Hospital Association. So we're, we're still cool, we're kind of a larger, probably four or five other hospitals. But nonetheless, you know, our performance ourselves is still rated on us. But we bought a reinsurance cap for an individual of about thirty-five thousand, just to kind of be conservative per se. But right now, I think maybe we only had two, two large ones that actually hit those caps in calendar year twenty-three. So far, it is, it's been a good, a good transition for us. So we're still working through our reporting that is required to the Iowa Insurance Division. I hear that it's due at the end of March, but we'll know a little bit more when that's completed as well. But we're really happy with that so far. And then otherwise, general supply costs in fiscal twenty-three, I lost the, the screen here, but they decreased by about twenty, twenty percent. Kind of found a, your Covid testing bicker, there was a lot more free tests that were being offered out. But just, I think we stopped doing requiring masks at the facility. I mean, we just didn't have the, the PPE costs that we were incurring from the prior year. We didn't have some of the supply shortages and then having to buy kind of out of contract that we've experienced like we had in fiscal twenty-three. Any questions regarding those financials? Let them talk just a little bit here about the tax law.
Your self-insured, you work at that, work for, will all go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, we still, we still offer free plans. So the, we've got a hydrodectal health plan that's portable, that allows employees to use the PPO plan. We also have a traditional PPO plan, as well as an HMO plan. Two plans allow everyone to go across the border, and then otherwise, one plan that is a cheaper plan allows people just to kind of, either healthcare and stuff. And that, that would include Irish City and Des Moines. So Mitchell County Regional Health Center has a tax levy rate of one point one two eight one six. And that is going to probably help me too with the, the length of time we've had this rate. But I know it goes back to the nineties. Oh, she, she said no? No? The exact time, it's two thousand nine, yeah, year. Oh, two thousand nineteen.
It was even less before that.
Okay.
Before.
Okay. But our, I, I think at that time too, that our, our trustees had indicated they would not raise that rate. And so we haven't raised the rate, but of course, valuations have gone up over time. But our general levy rate is at the point two seven. Our FICA is at point five eight eight one six. And then we have an ambulance rate of point two seven as well. And then we do have a twenty-eight E agreement with the Riceville Ambulance Service, in which we pass through eighteen point nine percent of those ambulance funds back through to them, because they are covering eighteen point nine percent of Mitchell County in some of their emergency response and then transfers of those patients in that area of our county. That was, I think, evaluated until it was arrived about ten years ago, so. So just, just to kind of share a little bit, of hospitals that levy in the state of Iowa, this is actually from the Department of Management, it's a little worksheet, it's kind of hard to see here overhead. But there are forty-three total hospitals, thirty-nine of them are public hospitals and four of them are revenue hospitals. And the difference is, is kind of how that levy rate is established. So if you're a revenue hospital, you have a flat levy rate of, I think, one point oh eight. And whereas the thirty-nine public hospitals would establish then a levy rate that they determine, you know, based on what options they have. So Mitchell County Regional Health Center, in getting dollars-wise, we're actually the fifth lowest in all of the dollars that are levied by hospitals in the state of Iowa. And this is, again, off the Department of Management. And this is for the fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four year. So below us are Howard County, who actually is a revenue hospital, Homewood County Hospital, Unavista Regional Medical Center, and then Floyd County Hospital is actually the last. And then the levy rate of these sites then, so our hospital then is the tenth lowest levy rate of those public hospitals. So again, you've got the revenue hospitals again that are the one point oh eight. And so they make up four of the entities in the middle here. But then otherwise, our one point one two eight one six is the tenth lowest rate that is set then by those other public hospitals. Wanted to share that as well, off of the Department of Management.
The only thing about that is, the one point oh eight is hospitals that have a lot higher, higher valuation. So that's the difference. I mean, I mean, they, they can lower their rates, their tax rate because there's so much valuation. Yet those hospitals are raising a million dollars or more.
Yeah. And so a revenue hospital would be Cassius County Hospital. And they're at 1.8 million. Winisheek Medical Center is a revenue hospital, they're getting 5 million. And in People's Memorial Hospital, they're at that 1.08, they're at 1.3 million. And then the very last one is Howard County. Their valuation is kind of higher than those other hospitals.
But they just changed from one kind of hospital, they just voted to go to a 347.
They did.
So they were just able to have that.
So the top one is the, you know, 3.589. Yeah. And they're, they're just number 22 in the list. So yeah, it's kind of interesting. Again, that's on public record as well, listed out on the Department of Management. If you're interested, I can send you the file. And the last thing I just want to talk about is, you know, just a little bit of how we're organized as well. So besides, Betty's going to talk a little bit about our board of trustees, but, you know, so we still have a Mercy One management services agreement. As part of that management services agreement, we pay Mercy a percentage of our total expenses in order to be a partner with them or an affiliate. And as part of that then, we, there's some benefits of that. One being then, as part of that agreement then, is they employ our CEO. So Shelley herself is employed by Mercy One. And then is our leader of our organization. Additionally then, we also have physician services agreement that flow through Mercy as well. So most of our physicians at our family practice clinic are actually employed by Mercy. Their compensation comes from Mercy, but then it obviously passed through to us. And those Shelley's costs are also passed through to us. But then some of the benefits that we also receive as paying up the percentage of expenses then, the 2% are the legal and the regulatory compliance, the support guidance we also pay fees as well. But the network connectivity and security, you know, IT right now is just such a focus in cyber crimes, you know. So they are, you know, IT for Mercy and their network connectivity. They're creating those firewalls for us to help keep our data safe. We also have a specialty discount, $10. They assist with managed contracting with all of the different insurance payers that are out there. They help them negotiate those agreements to help get everything. And they have better weather. They're managing for a number of other hospitals, you know, hospitals here, Iowa, O.R. community. But that pretty much concludes what I have to say. If you have any questions for me. You can tap on the desk.
Well, I'm going to back, go back to one of the sitting in your chair. In 1994, it was a year that, that we entered into an affiliation agreement with Mercy. And at that time, our hospital was in dire financial straits. It was an old building. We just didn't have the money. And so healthcare has changed a lot. You know, I look back to when we first built our hospital. You know, we had 727 births in the first two years, can you imagine? We had 32 beds. Now we have 25 beds, of which 16 are acute care and the others, swing beds and so on. So healthcare has changed a lot. But when we affiliated with Mercy, you might ask, what the board supervisors has to do with any affiliation? What do you have to do with a county hospital? We are a county hospital, you know? You're county government, you're the board of supervisors. Well, what happened was, the very first thing and only thing at that time that we had to do with the affiliation was in 1997, there had to be a new building built for the doctors. Because I don't know how many of you are old enough to remember, but there used to be where the daycare was, that was the doctor's office. And all the doctors had their own private office. So when we, when we did the PSA, the Physician Services Contract, they said they would provide us with four family practitioners. And there were two physician assistants at that time that fell under that. And most of our doctors were at the retirement age. That was another reason we went, you know, with the affiliation agreement. So they brought four new physicians onboard, of which none of them are here anymore. Miller, Hagman, Conway, Miller. And we still had, Dr. Spencer was doing some. Dr. Voki stayed on for a while. Dr. Ross was never part of the original Mercy MSA. He decided he wanted to be out of his home. But it was only a few years after that that he decided to be part of Mercy. So anyway, I started following that because in 1997, they had to ask the board to hold a revenue hearing, a public hearing for them to do revenue funds in order for them to have enough funds to build that clinic part of the hospital. So I well remember in the old courthouse, we held that hearing. And mostly the people that were there were people from the hospital and Mercy employees. Because a few of the people remained, I think 15, 16, maybe more than that at the point where we affiliated because they wanted to be sure they had a job. And we were so low in finances and, and services. So there were a number of people, and there still are some in the St. Ansgar area, that are Mercy employees that worked in that clinic. But anyway, as, as those people retired, then they became Mercy employee, Mitchell County Regional Health Center. So I do want to tell you that we had to hold the revenue, we had to hold a public hearing for them to do the revenue bonds in order for them to have the money to build that new clinic. The only person I really remember as a resident of Mitchell County that was there was Wayne Fredericks. And he was sitting right in the front row, "Yeah, I'm still just distinctly seeing." Everybody was in favor. If they wouldn't have been in favor, we could have said, "No, you can't do it." That was the end of our, of our being involved. Now, the Mitchell County Supervisors way back when, that's the only time, they got to appoint all the trustees when the hospital, when they first decided to have a county public hospital. The board of supervisors appointed all seven trustees. Now, if we ever get below, if we get down to three trustees, then the board of supervisors would appoint the four trustees. And let me tell you, that happened, we got down to, down to four. And we are a seven-member board. We got down to four. At the time, I think it was probably in the 198, 1998, 1999, somewhere in there. Gary Cooper, Holmeyer, and Dayblow all resigned. And we were all sitting there thinking, if one more person resigns, then we appoint. Now, let me tell you the thing that we're very interested in, in the new board of trustees. And I'm the only one that's on that board that wasn't appointed. And I ran for election in 2010. And I happened to, you know, I, I just happened to win over one of the good trustees that was on that. But, so I've been involved ever since. But I had been attending all of the board meetings, you know, because I wanted to see how they were operating and so on. And the PSA called for the core physicians. There was a kind of a human cry, you know, upward because some of the family practitioners that were here before, Dr. Place, Dr. Ross, Dr. Voki, Dr. Spencer, some of them were very vocal about it. Like I said, Dr. Voki said that. Well, to get to the present, I am the only one. Everybody else was an appointed member because somebody left the board of trustees and the board could appoint that member. Even right now, we just appointed Neil Hernan because we just lost a long time, very good member, John Koster. Vanderdees resignation recently, and it's simply because he started a new business and it's just been, it's gotten beyond his wildest expectations and I'm very happy for him. And he just doesn't have time to serve. So what we looked at now and, and the board is, we, we try to look at people that live in different parts of the county so that every part of the county is represented. So we have St. Ansgar, O.S., Wrightsville, St. Stowe. Now, it used to be that, that the code said only four members could serve in the town where the hospital was built. Now they've changed that. They recently changed the code so that you can change the members of the board of supervisors locally to that. Go from seven down to five. You can decide on term limits for them, that they can only serve so many terms. You can also remove the requirement, they removed that requirement that no more than four could be in the town where the hospital was. They enlarged a little bit upon the requirements for absence of four regular meetings. There could be more stringent attendance records on that. But anyway, so now we're running for four, four-year terms. And this coming year, there will be three members running. And that will be Cheryl Smalley, Steve Norby, and the Porch. And we have two members that represent banks. We have two members that represent farming, name industry, and they also were in business. One was a teacher, Neil, and another teacher. We have a member, some Porky, is part of the family business that they own. Cheryl Smalley is a nurse. So we have looked at, I mean, it's wonderful, anybody can run for the board, but it's wonderful to have. And I guess I'd say I represent government and perhaps a lot of other things that I've done, not government. And so anyway, we're very, 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 very involved in the board. And I think that it's, I, I look at that, I look at what we tax for. And we could tax, we could levy a tax, we're a certifying board. We certify our budget to the object, or the board of supervisors have nothing to do with, you know, with that. But we certify the tax and we could do all of our insurance, we could do all of FICA, we could do IFRS. There's just a number of things that the code would allow us to levy a tax for. And we only levy the 27 cents that we're allowed to for general, 27 cents for ambulance. And then we only levy for a portion of FICA. So I think, you know, when it says we're one of the lowest taxed, we could levy for so much more and so many of the others do have, but we do not. So there's a few things that I wanted to say, there's many things, but it's getting to be a long time. And I do want to say that there's a few things that, that this lady and these people would not bring up. And that happens to be, when we went with our MSA, that was Master Services Freeman, it originally called for three people to be employees of Mercy under that. That was the CEO, CFO, our financial officer, and, and our CNO, our nurse. So when, when Sandy Leggett left and we looked, then soon the other two, the financial person left, the nurse person left. And we looked at number one, Shelley applying for the job, and she'd been the CNO. So we looked at an interim person, and that was Julie Brown. And we asked her, and she finally decided that she would like to serve permanently.
Judy.
Judy, Judy, permanently in that position. And then we looked at the CFO, Greg Herple, and he was a Mercy employee. But because his, his home is in Mount Cato and he has an apartment here all week and the insurance situation, he asked if he could change to be our employee. And actually, the MSA simply says that the absolute person has to be CEO. So now both of those people are our employees. Then I'd like to say that the other thing that we do have, our general surgeon is our employee. And when Dr. Voki sat left, he had been a Mercy employee. And when Dr. Feller came, our compter's, he's now our employee. None of our nurse practitioners anymore are under Mercy, and no PAs or anything. But anyway, that was the original thing. I would like to say that we, we used, in the time of Mercy, we had a real Mercy, oh my, we had so many different, they stayed maybe three years, our CEOs. And I think for the most part, they were mostly the business part of the organization. They were good, but they're a business part. When Shelley came, she is a nurse, she not only became the business, and I mean, but she also, she makes rounds every morning. She knows everybody in that facility, the culture in that facility completely changed. So, you know, we're very fortunate. And then when I looked at Gina, and we now, Greg stayed on for a while. But Gina has been there how many years? Over 20, yeah. And Gina is a fantastic CFO. And she also, she and Greg, I mean, this is how good our financial department is. Press corps is having a problem, they ask if we would come in and help them out. So our financial department has helped them out. In fact, Greg was an employee for a time after Gina took over as maybe CFO. They recently were asked to go to Hayward because they were having trouble. And so three of our people, that's how good they are, were asked to go over there and help them out. So, and Shelley was named one of the top 20. She would say that, she was named one time, you know, as one of the top 20 CEOs to know in the nation. So I think, you know, when I look at all the good things that we have, you know, it's just been, it's amazing. And we have a steering committee over Wrightsville, we're going to be in the process of raising funds. We will have a pledging situation, you know, and we will have a name recognition for certain amounts. And there's just so many things. We also have a succession plan. And Shelley has been here, she's, she's gonna, you know, she's gonna retire here. She and Jim go to home here, you know, she will retire here after all these years. A big part, you know, she is on the Iowa Health Association Board of Directors. She, in the last couple of years, was named the American Health Association Board of Directors. So you understand what great people we have here. I, I couldn't say much more, but I'm going to end it with this. We have done so much with this hospital here and such progressive things. And I want to tell you as members of board of supervisors, I look at you and you also have the most unique opportunity to be the most progressive county in this. And, and, you know, I know you're very highly thought of that. But I look at the things that you could do with the money you have available to be really progressive and do things for this town. So, you know, I certainly would say, I would love to have that when I was here. But I'd love to just encourage you to go that route because that's, that's what we have done on the board of trustees. And we can see what it's amount to in a hospital, and we probably are one of the largest employees. And it's kind of big economic development. And I heard people say, we, we get people from Mercy because they had to hold beds in their hospital because they didn't have the staff to fill them. So we get some of their traffic. And when I look at people that said to me, you know, we don't have to go anywhere else for specialty services. Almost every specialty service, whatever one would want, is at our clinic at some time or another. And same day appointments or the next day appointments are something that we're going for. And there are places that you can't get in for a week or two weeks, it doesn't matter. So, you know, we've done great things there. I look at all the So, you know, we've done great things there. I look at all the rest of the things that have happened in our county. And you guys are in a position, and you too, Sydney, are in a position to do those very same things for the county. Thank you so much for having us.
I have a question. Do you ever consider putting urgent care?
Pardon?
Urgent care, do you ever think of putting that in?
We've discussed it at times. It would potentially change kind of how our structure aligns with our clinics. You know, so, and obviously it would change our structure with our providers as well. We haven't explored it for a while. But it's still something that we've talked about at times. We know it's being offered over in Mason City and in Chatham City. But it's. Yeah. Yeah.
Providers.
Yeah, it's, you know, what's difficult, I think, too, is, you know, people want to see their own provider. Especially if they're having, you know, somewhat of an emergent or even non-emergent situation. Shelley, do you have any thoughts on emergent care?
I did something that we talked about, probably with more than your time. You know, that option space is always an issue, which is probably what parking is always an issue and space. Coming up again. You can't use the same space that you have for the clinic or in urgent care. You have to find new space. To find a designated one that would fall to the champ right now.
I guess I'd have to say one thing, and I know urgent care is different from emergent care. But we have such excellent emergency care, and that is 24/7. And so when I look at that and the accolades they've gotten for that, and I think, you know, that would probably be our, our answer to, you know, trying to provide urgent care.
Yeah, I mean, we, we track every single one of our locations and make sure that we can look at what people are going to need for. We add that back into our services or, you know, expand our current services. We, we want to be able to provide that. We recently, we also did a market assessment. Haven't shared it with the board yet. We're planning another meeting today on it. Again, to really do an evaluation of our landscape. We did this the last time in 2014, 2015. Basically, to see where are patients going? Are they staying here? Where are the patients in Boyd County? Where are the patients in, you know, Presto or Howard County? And so they need to do, to help us determine, you know, what additional, what can we need? So maybe the additional primary care physicians, maybe additional, what can we support from our specialty care services? Do we need our own? Or, so, we are going to be accepting some medical students who are interested in general surgery. We already have a general surgeon who's quite interesting coming here. Once, you know, Dr. Branson decides to retire, any of that, I mean, I make sure we understand that. But, you know, so we're always thinking what the, what the hope like 10 years from now for our assessment is. You know, projecting out to 2028, 2029 to help us, you know, plan that far out. And, and again, the building space issues that we have and, you know, just we, we obviously with the clinic heavy go up. And so just trying to overcome some of the physical constraints that we have. But it is, it's always been, been a topic of conversation for sure. And we've definitely seen in 2015, saw significant increase in our, when Medicaid existed, we saw an increase in our emergency visit. And we've seen steady increases since the pandemic. I think we used to have the 15, 15 an hour wall when it happened, you know? And so we're looking to, it's interesting because we get, we do pull, and the market assessment will show this too. It would pull from a variety of areas. We pull from Minnesota. We pull from Michigan. We pull from Texas. So we really, and again, that will show up and see that, you can see how the board stuff has changed in the market assessment. But we've seen that stay in local, our care services. And so that may be, we can sure that.
And the great part, one month when we went to meeting, we had 150 new patients at that time. 150 new, so.
Oh, it is, you know. We track our new patients. We get a number of patients from, like, Acre Family Health for ancillary services. And so we look at where they're coming from, who's employing them, how do we thank them for letting them partner with them for services. We get the forms from migraine.
The interesting thing is that we have doctors doing for patients that want to come here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we aren't going to be short of doctors in future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I can promise I'm not going to talk to that. That was a lot of good information. Always good to see people get excited about healthcare, so. There we go. I have some maps for you guys. These have not changed. So I guess I'll start by agreeing with you myself. My name is Haley Langrell. I work for Trinity Logistics. We represent Summit Carbon Solutions, doing primarily the non-environmental permitting. But I also do a lot of state holding relations, so talking to board supervisors. I have Grant Terry here with me. He's one of our Iowa project managers. And then Richard Doug, who was here with me last time, he's our construction manager for Iowa. So they can help answer some questions. But what I want to start with is just going through some updates for you guys. There's not a ton since the last time I've been here. But I'll go through that and then we can get to any questions you guys have. So I think the, the newest thing, most recent update we have is our partnership with Poet. And that announcement went out yesterday. So we will have 12 new ethanol plants in Iowa that we're partnering with. Again, that's going to be on a completely different timeline than our current route that we've already had hearings on. They will also add five ethanol plants in South Dakota. So that'll be a own process up there with the state U.C. But just so you guys are aware of that. Next is the survey access. I know that's something that you guys have had questions about. So we are at 44 out of the 80 tracks of granted survey access at this time. And then as far as acquisition, we don't have any signed easements at this point. And that's, you know, I'm really, because that was put on hold pretty quickly after it started. And that's really the same with survey access. I don't believe that we're going out and looking actively, looking for survey access right now. So. And Grant, you can go. So hopefully, we're hoping this will pick up once we have our IUV permit, the timeline for that. There's really no set timeline. But we did complete all of our hearings. All the briefs are done. And we're hoping toward an answer in March timeframe. But like I said, they can, they can make a decision when they really want. If there's no timeline or anything like that. And then I know I sent you guys a little bit of information regarding the valve placement. But since we're all here today, I wanted to kind of just run through that on the map we have here. And just keep in mind when we're going over this, these sites could change because the valves, you know, that's also a negotiation with landowners. So if we can move it to one, move on to another property and it works for everyone, that's what we'll do. But this is what we have right now. So we can start at the most, most southern valve, which would be not on this map in Boyd County. So there will be one down here. And then you go about 13, a little less than 13 miles up, and that's the first valve in Mitchell County. And then the distance between that one and the next one is about five and a half. And then you have this third one up here, which right now is on 475th. And that's about 1.9 miles north. And then we'll have another one at the absolute energy location, which is about 3.3 miles north of the one on 475th. So I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, the regulation that it's 12 miles outside of the HCA's. That is the regulation, but most times on our pipeline route, it's going to be closer to 12 miles as far as our valve placement goes. Say it, say it again.
I thought you were going to add when our goal set up, when it costs a senior.
Um, right now, this is where we have them placed. It means you not have the different names on them. So let me look, we can look into that. I'll get back to you on it. But right now, this is where we have them placed. If I can do a, if we're searching that on our system, we can get back to you on it. Why would they not put one around that? Any other questions off the balance? Okay. Next, I'll talk a little bit about dispersion modeling. This is another new thing since last time I was here. We are currently offering private meetings, so with county and city officials only, to go over the dispersion modeling that we've done. So in those meetings, we kind of lay out, give you a general background on dispersion modeling. And then we pop the reader in the city to get our models and then we walk through their mathematics specifically, maps. So I have spoken with the emergency manager. I sent him an email, letting him know that this is an option. Told him I was going to talk to you guys about it today. So that's something that typically we would set up through the emergency manager. I can do that with him and then, you know, kind of if you guys want to, you could come. If all of you want to see it, you could do a separate meeting at another time. But that's something that I would work through with him with. And then if there's more, if you want to see it as well, I can link you guys on setting up a meeting. Because we've done both for, for different counties. So. Takes about, that's a good question. It does take about two hours because it's a lot of information and we put in time for question and answer. I think the shortest one I've been to was an hour and a half because there were no questions. But usually the questions that last about two hours. And like I said, I'll get with Chris on that and try to set up a timer and you guys know what we're going to do. But really, the reason for coordinating it through him is so we can have anybody from the bar time up as well. And then as far as legal updates, I know that you guys know what has happened in the Southern District of Iowa. Shelby in Story County, Judge Rose did, did her, which is a fair enough to be enforced, those ordinances. As far as the Northern District, the update we have there is in Emmett County, very similar ordinance was passed. The chief, chief judge there, Leonard Strand, made a procedural ruling. Where really the big question was if there was enough case law to decide this case in Emmett County. And he decided that there is without, he doesn't need to go to the Iowa Supreme Court. And I'll just read his quote. He says, "I agree with Chief Judge Rose," which is the chief judge in the Southern District, "that Goodell and the cases it cites, along with other Iowa Supreme Court cases addressing implied preemption of local ordinances, provide sufficient guidance to determine the preemption issues raised in plaintiff's complaint." So this leads our, you know, it is just a procedural ruling. There's been no official order given. But it does lead, lead our attorneys to believe that he will eventually side with what Judge Rose, with her decision, which is that the ordinances would not be enforceable by law. And then I know another thing that's come up a lot is water usage. So I wanted to touch on that a bit. And I can get specifics for the ethanol plant. But as a general rule, you know, we use, our water usage is for cooling towers at the ethanol or at the capture facility, which would be at the ethanol plant. And we work through the DNR to get those permits. And so it will be about a 10% general increase in the water usage that's already at the ethanol plants. So just about 10% increase there for our capture facilities. And then lastly, the FEMSA letter that has been brought up a lot, I don't know if you guys have seen that yourself, but it was sent to Summit Carbon Solutions and other, I believe it was sent to Navigator as well, and then other counties. So just to address that, and I'm going to read from this page because it's not my area of expertise. I'll just, I'll read the statement. But so FEMSA's letter did not tell the counties they can have setbacks. Instead, they provided examples of counties creating setbacks for other boundaries. The letter also highlighted that counties must follow state and federal laws when deciding land use. Chief Judge Rose's decision about the state laws overruling county decisions is crucial. Counties cannot play setback rules for safety reasons, even if they have used the reason before. The letter does, doesn't provide a lot of new information and is similar to what, what Judge Rose has seen before. And so basically, it doesn't change the current situation. As far as proactive safety measures, FEMSA has indicated plans to strengthen the existing safety standards for carbon dioxide pipelines. Their board authority allows them to address immediate public risks posed by pipelines without waiting for new regulations to be published. So they will publish bulletins. We follow those. And we've kind of seen what, where they're going with the new regulations and we're already adhering to those as a company ourselves. I think, you know, just going back to the setbacks, to kind of make it a little bit easier than all the stuff that I'm reading that kind of gets into the weeds is, you know, the safety standard is at the federal level with FEMSA. That's how, that's how we see it. FEMSA regulates safety. Setbacks are a safety regulation. And then, you know, obviously with, at the state level, we follow the IUV's rule for, for the siding and routing. And then lastly, just to touch on the local government authority when it comes to the FEMSA letter. While local governments may not be federally certified to oversee pipeline safety, they still retain rights under state law. Local authorities may, they do play an essential role in regulating land use, including decisions on setback distances and property development near pipelines. However, these powers should not overstep the boundaries set by federal pipeline safety laws. Which would be FEMSA. So that's really all I had. I know some of that is, have to kind of read through it. But do you guys have any questions for me?
Yeah, 10% water usage where you dump that when you're done with it.
That's going to be a capture question. I can definitely get you an answer on it.
Know what you're going to do with water.
Well, but again, the way that the, the project is separated is we have our pipeline team and our capture team. The capture team is responsible for the capture facility, everything at the capture, the water usage there, the, the proper disposal of the water. There'll be state regulation into that water disposal that there will be following, of course. I, I'm personally on the pipeline side. I'm going to be the PM of essentially half the state when it comes to the pipeline construction and commissioning and operation. As far as to get you a technical, specific answer around the regulations around the water disposal at the capture site, I could get that answer for you and then get that back. I just don't have it right now.
Yeah, so Grant, just to break that, he is our, one of our pipeline engineers. We do have capture facility engineers. And I can get with him and get an answer to that specifically.
If you're using it for cooling, that water temperature is going to be high or if you discharge it to a stream, that might have a negative effect on.
Well, and like you said, you know, we, and like I said, we do work through the DNR on that. And there will be specific procedures that we have to follow.
Just like the, kind of a, a parallel of that is when, when we utilize water for hydrotesting, there are very stringent restrictions in place when it comes to de-watering after the hydrotest is, is taking place. So there'll be following something similar to that.
Questions? Public, have any questions?
All right. Questions? Public, have any questions?
Well, I have a lot of questions. So, my biggest concerns were some of the things she brought up already. Um, concern was over the amount of water that will be used and the effect on the springbed creeps. Um, the concern over groundwater due to the micro cracks and leaks underground because they go undetected for a longer period of time. And concern that property rights are not being protected. Concern that the danger zone for hazardous CO2 pipeline is greater than the 300 feet that Summit states. Um, that's why the setback rules are wanted for public safety. And to be setback from churches, schools, businesses, small villages, and houses. And that there's no liability, I mean, no liability insurance available to sign on property owners as the writers for the hundreds of millions of dollars that liability would need to be covered if there was an accident or a leak. Um, because it's a, a pollution, a pollutant, you can't get liability coverage. And there's no written commitments from Summit, um, for this liability insurance. So, those are the concerns. There may, there's probably others from other people.
So, I mean, I can touch on the liability a little bit. Um, the liability does fall on Semicarbon Solutions, um, because we are the owner of the pipeline. Um, the landowner would not, um, need the liability insurance on the pipeline since they do not own it. Um, if there is any kind of rupture, that, that would fall back on us.
And where Summit no longer owns the pipeline?
There is no plan at this point to, to sell the pipeline, but if.
But we can talk about forever easements. How can Summit deal with that?
So, if it is sold, the easement language would go to the new owner. And regardless of who owns it, that's just a matter of law is that that liability would fall onto the pipeline company.
Even if it's a foreign country?
Regardless of the situation, the pipeline owner is responsible when it comes to any damage to liability.
So, even if a tree root grows into it?
Even if, uh, you, you have an issue on a, a property that is a signed easement holder that ends up going out or affecting, you know, two neighbors over that is a not, a non-easement holder, they're still responsible at the end of the day. And that's common industry practice across the pipeline industry with operators.
Do you mean have that in writing?
Uh, it might be spelled out in the easement, but again, that's common industry practice. And every, in every, in every group that I've ever worked for when it comes to damages associated with the pipeline, and I've been with companies where there've been damages associated with the pipeline, they're always still unresponsible. And the ones that can have remediation.
I mean, they restore it back to normal? Is that what the plan is?
Uh, yes.
So, they would take the pipeline out and restore it back to normal?
Again, it would depend on the situation.
And so if pipeline is no longer needed because this is an unproven technology, will those pipelines be removed at the company's expense?
I believe it's, uh, in the state of Iowa, there is a, a bond in place for the removal of the line, but it will be up to the landowner to determine whether or not they'd like that line removed. And there are very strict restrictions in place when it comes to the construction of the line from environmental inspection, uh, ag inspection. Uh, that's all essentially county provided that, you know, we have to adhere to. Uh, I don't necessarily know if that would be in place if the line was to be abandoned or removed. But there is a policy imposed on.
So then, I mean, I think I read at the beginning of all this that the pipeline would not go through, um, like areas that were considered natural habitats or endangered species.
So, so we conduct environmental, historical, cultural, biological, uh, standard survey across the, the entire route, across all five states. Uh, those bands are going to differ, so if we have a hundred-foot easement, uh, sometimes like for, uh, like a cultural, environmental, if we have a hundred-foot easement, we might survey out an additional, you know, 150 feet or have like a, a thousand-foot corridor to where that, that survey's been conducted. If it's determined that, you know, we, we traverse through an area where there would be an endangered species that would require a reroute, we are required to make that reroute or.
So, even if it's through a creek that goes horizontally across this pipeline?
Uh, I mean, typically, we're going to bore creeks, but, uh, or HDD cordial direction, all right, but, uh, I mean.
So, that means underneath the creek?
Yes.
So, how do you know if these micro cracks and we've read about that happen in pipelines, how, would that affect the creek water? Especially if there's springbed and the karst topography?
Uh, again, it's a hypothetical situation. Um, I mean, you're, you're assuming that you're going to have a, an anomaly in the pipeline. That would be detected. I mean, we, we have pressure sensors at either side of each valve that are going to be able to detect mining changes.
Each side of the creek has one of those?
Uh, if the, the, well, the federal requirement for valving around water bodies is if it is 150 feet from one bank to one bank, we're required to valve either side of the water body. Uh, but, I mean, with a minimum of 20 miles per ton of valves, which is on average across the state, much. Again, you're going to have a pressure transmitter, uh, on either side of that valve. That's going to be linked to our control room.
Those are all underground, so we don't have to see them or how it's.
Uh, valves are both there because there's, there's maintenance required with the valves and.
So, that would be coming into the property to do those things again?
Uh, yes. So, there would be, I mean, with the easement, we're given access to be able to conduct those. And it's typically, uh, when it comes to operations for, you know, conducting, you know, I think it's, uh, either biannually, uh, but it's going to depend on the company's operational plan when it comes to just checking those valves. It's not like an everyday thing typically.
Well, I would hope not. But what I'm saying is if you want, if my particular property is one of the first ones, and we have native oaks that we don't want taken down, so there's a lot of issues with that. I don't know how far underneath an oak tree you have to go to avoid damaging it. And if we have wildlife that we're trying to conserve and we're planting trees to expand the woodland area, you know, those are the concerns.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, typically, in negotiations with landowners, if, you know, they have, uh, I've seen it a lot, at least where, where I've done projects in the South, where they have, you know, 100, 200-year oaks that have been on the property for generations.
Yeah, several generations.
In, in most cases, we will avoid them. We'll route around them so that we don't impact them. Um, again, when it, when it comes to, back to your, your habitat question as well, uh, I know like, for instance, there are big restrictions when it comes to construction for, uh, like raptors, like hawks and bald eagles and things such as that, where if, you know, they're, they're determined to be in the location based on our bird surveys, that it heavily limits our construction activities in the area, if not halts them. Um, there are restrictions with, I, I think it's the, what's, what's the bat?
Longyeared bat?
Longyeared bat. So, there are times of the year that, you know, we, we can't even conduct clearing operations based on, on that habitat. And, you know, their, their breeding and mating seasons and things such as that.
Well, hunting season goes from October to about, you know, February.
Yes, ma'am. And I, I think on every project I've ever completed, there are very strict hunting restrictions, and that's going to be, uh, typically landowner-driven. You know, if they say, hey, I, you know, I, I lease out my land for, for hunting activities from, you know, this month period to this month period, so I'm going to restrict your construction from, you know.
The month before.
What, what would be like a, a typical day restriction on that that you've seen?
So, typically, we would, you know, halt construction on weekends and then have on Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM during, during that time, construction's done.
So, again, that's, it's, in most all cases, will be landowner-driven just based on their, if they have hunting activities. Uh, they, they might restrict, uh, construction, uh, on weekends so that we can't construct on weekends if, you know, we're, we're doing a Saturday, Sunday. Uh, and then also if, you know, they have hunting activities during the week, they could restrict our construction to, you know, 8:00 to 3:00.
Oh, I was thinking it'd be like a month before hunting so you don't scare off, you know.
And, and, you know, I've had, you know, big, big leases and other projects where they do something like that. And again, it just comes down to the negotiation.
Any mail time?
Is there any plan to share the dispersion modeling with the public?
Um, not at this time.
What's the reason?
Uh, again, it's, it's sensitive information. Um, you know, if we were to take the, the entire dispersion, and it's multiple scenarios for, you know, multiple different weather situations, atmospheric situations, and share that publicly, so we just put it out there so that everyone can look at it on the internet. Um, I mean, it's going to be the, the largest infrastructure project of its kind in the United States, actually, in the world. Um, and if someone wanted to target something for, you know, nefarious purposes, it gives them essentially a footprint to do so.
Does that map do the same thing?
I'm sorry?
The map that you put out do the same thing?
Um, the map only depicts the line. It doesn't depict, you know, areas where you might have higher concentrations or, you know, uh, where you have two lines coming together and things such as that. It, it gives, it gives information, but it doesn't give all the information needed to make a determination like that.
Yeah, homeowners need to make a determination about easement.
Yes, ma'am.
Without worrying the risks to the family.
And again, uh, Rob Dillon is our Director of Regulatory Compliance, um, based on the dispersion modeling. And it'll be, he's, he comes to, I don't know if he attends every meeting, but he does provide a lot of input at the individual dispersion meetings and talks through where, you know, uh, individuals that, you know, would be in a potential impact zone will have their own personalized response plan. And that'll be something that we'll provide, and it'll be provided to all the emergency responders as well.
Does that include student response?
Uh, again, it's going to be from, uh, from Rob Dillon based on that personal plan.
Mr. Horgan?
On your cooling process, at any point in time, does the water act in common contact with CO2 with your, um, piping?
Motion.
Yes. It's, it's in the vessel, and the water cools the vessel.
Right.
And do you recycle the water?
I don't know.
Again, that would come back to his question on how that water is, uh, disposed of at the capture facility.
So, you're going to get that information?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so typically, whatever guidelines the capture facility follows with the DNR is what we would have to do, but that would be spelled out in our permit, with the DNR. So, currently, the capture, or currently, the ethanol plants have cooling towers in their process that they use, and we would have to follow the same guidelines that they have.
They put a lot of emphasis steam?
Like I said, I don't, I don't know their process, and I'm not sure what the capture facility, uh, permits would be. I'm not part of the process, but typically, we'd have to follow the same guidelines that the ethanol plants would have.
All righty.
And to answer your question about the valves at the river, there is one, uh, one mile north of the river and one mile south of the river currently.
At one time, when they came, they said they were going to put one on each side of the river, right at the river.
Is it a pretty substantial river?
Yes.
So, uh, they won't put one right inside the river. They'll, they'll, they'll look at a, uh, the, the different floodplain situation. So, you know, 50, 100-year floodplain, and usually when we want to put a, an above-ground structure around it, stay outside of whatever that floodplain could be.
Shouldn't flood there because it's the highest point in the sea river. But you're hard to go underneath it. How far back are you going to have to go to get under that block?
Uh, it just depends on, you know, one of the things she mentioned, based on, uh, like the, the incident in Sotarsia where, you know, FEMSA came back and, uh, put some additional restrictions and additional recommendations on CO2 pipelines, which ended up being in their bulletin, which was, uh, they wanted additional geo, uh, geo-hazard analysis on different types of soil and locations, uh, which resulted in shoring and lateral migration analysis. That is what ended up probably lengthening its, its hundreds at this point, uh, of our drills across the project for those different water body crossings. Um, uh, to give you an example, I mean, it's, it's kind of varied from, from, uh, water body crossing to water body crossing just based on the individual, I guess, the elevation differences in that area. But, I mean, for like some of the major rivers, I mean, we'll be 50 to 80 feet deep under the, the mudbank or mudline of that river. So, when the, the rule that I like to use is, you know, when, when we design these HDDs, we, we take all the variables into consideration because we never want to have to, you know, go back and have to lower anything or do any, any type of impact in the future. So, I mean, we're going to put these, the line deep enough under these water body crossings so that it would not be affected by the water crossing, nor will our line affect the water crossing. And that's just, that's common practice in the industry as well.
How do you adjust the risk of, um, of poisoning wells, well wells, from micro leaks?
Uh, again, that's a, would be a hypothetical situation. I mean, there, I, I was asked one time, is there a setback associated with wells? Uh, no, ma'am, there's not. But, I mean, the, when, when you're talking about micro leaks and micro cracks, that's, it's not a common occurrence. It really isn't.
But if one occurrence is bad?
Yeah, I, I agree with you. You know, one occurrence will be bad. That's why there are very stringent and strict integrity management plans and through regulation and through company practice that we get put in place. And that's an ongoing, evolving plan that, uh, you know, based on how the line is constructed, how you operate the line, and how you, uh, manage the.
And that's all a perfect scenario, but we're talking about karst topography, which, you know, fluctuates because of, and like you say, there's floodplains. And so some of this area that the pipeline is going through is a flood plain.
Yes, ma'am. That's common practice. Lines go through floodplains all over the United States.
Well, and I don't think it's a good thing.
I mean, if, if a line couldn't go through a floodplain, there would not be lines in the ground today.
Great. That's my one here. Thank you.
But, again, uh, through the integrity management plan that the company has to put in place and, and maintain and update every single year for federal mandates, um, you know, there's going to be a pipeline inspection, which can detect metal loss, can detect any types of dents in the line itself. And each of those, uh, those anomalies that are detected based on, um, there's, there's a criteria that, you know, would either say this is an immediate repair, you know, based on the metal loss and the, the degrees that are. It needs to be taken care of in 15 days versus 90 days versus 180 days. And that's all dictated through federal regulation and then also the integrity management.
We have to say to landowners, all that damage.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, if we have to come back out for an anomaly dig and, you know, dig up, uh, the line to that area, make our repairs, if it calls for repairs on the line or daylight the line, you know, if you have crops in the ground and we drive through, you know, quarter-mile crops on the easement to get out through property, you're compensated for, for your time, for the crops.
Soil compaction?
Yes, ma'am. And we're responsible for remediating it, again, back to.
And how long does that process take?
Uh, it's going to vary just based on the situation.
What's common? From the day you're there to.
Well, I mean, to give you a, a common idea for, for pipeline construction, so what, 120 days? 180? Okay.
That's six months?
Yes, ma'am. And that's just if we were to come in to your property through, you know, initial clearing, through final restoration. So, for an anomaly dig, you'd be cutting out a lot of that. But, I mean, 180 days you could use as like a conservative maximum.
Should get reimbursed?
No, reimbursement would be very quick. I, I mean, well, like when a, when a landowner signs an easement right now, there's a seven-day wait period that we are required to follow by state law, and then they receive that check at that point. So, I mean, reimbursement, I mean, that would be discussed with the landowner at, you know, essentially after we know we've impacted, you know, the easement's 50 feet. If we go through a quarter-mile property, we know exactly how much, you know, based on the, those dimensions of crop that we're impacting. So, if there's additional compensation that has to come after that based on compaction that's seen over, you know, a crop period or, or two crop periods, you know, that'd be at a later date. But that initial payment, I mean, that, that's quick.
Are there botanical joints in this plant? Place one of the, you know, well.
Everything's going to be well.
What's the diameter?
Uh.
Mitchell count is six inches.
Yeah. So, it'll be, I think that's the, the smallest pipe diameter that we have on the project is six inches. We had four at one time, uh, but six inches is our smallest diameter.
I have a question on that. Um, I was at a meeting, this is what, very early with the guys, and you were thinking six-inch and Mitchell count, but you were. but you were thinking for, uh, down the road, maybe going eight, just in case you wanna capture more. But that's no longer, it's, it's pretty much in writing here.
I mean, not necessarily. I mean, unless they decide they wanna change the easements. I mean, in the easement language, we do provide a little bit of flexibility when it comes to pipe size. And that's just in the event that, you know, we, we, if we say we have another plant come up connection, I don't know if there's another one up here in the immediate vicinity that would allow us to connect onto it. That may not be the case. I mean, that would really only be the situation where we looked at upsizing. I mean, ideally, the, you, you know, you wanna flow as efficiently as possible based on the volumes that you have. Although, you know, upsizing is, it would be more efficient to do it ahead of time if you are anticipating more volume down the line. But where you would most likely see that would be like on the main line, where you're gonna have a high collection of volumes. So on these, these smaller laterals, uh, the, the likelihood of either doing large increases in diameter are very small. But going from a six to an eight inch, again, it would just depend on the, the volume coming into this area, which I, I don't think there's, there's another inlet that would allow us to do that increase.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much for your information.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Discussion on FY twenty five budgets and building the new plan.
Well, I put this on the agenda because I just wanna discuss our budgets, what we're planning on doing to try to make our budget happen. And, uh, Rachel, we just talked about the budget first. Rachel, you set up this, uh, I have this timeline.
Yes.
So I did have a question on that and it's down at the, do you have a preview of this? So if you go down two thirds of the way and there's, uh, um, so the red entries, is that something that you put on there?
Yes.
Okay. So, two thirds of the way down, it's, uh, it's a red entry that says April second hold max levy public hearing. And below that, it's April first. Separate meeting, public hearing. Is that a meeting after or before our regular meeting here or how does that work?
Yep, so, hold up here. So that would be at our normal Tuesday meeting. Um, they just have the public hearing, just like we do our other, the other public hearings. That one would be just for our max levy.
Okay, that's what they did, no, it had to be something separate than this meeting.
No, they can be part of it.
Okay. Alright. And then the, so the, the timeline that Planscape has sent us, do you have that preview also?
I don't have that.
Okay. So I'm just wondering and it, it won't be necessarily have to have the answer now, but, um, just wanna make sure that both timelines work with each other. And I, I think they will, but, um, uh, on their timeline, we have, uh, the next thing that comes up would be the, they've done as the twelve, which says, will, will the board have determined which organizations they will consider funding with debt by this date? And that's when the preparation development agreements begin. And then after that is the March fifth, where we finalize the projects. And I think on your, your timeline, you have down that, in the middle, not later than March fifth. Do you want all your numbers by March, March fifth, is that correct?
So, on that sheet, what they're saying is, um, where it has a not later than March fifth, set for later, before the March fifteenth. So, those have to be set in the state website because we, I'm gonna need an export from the state website that will pull all the city budgets and all the school budgets and that's what we need, what is gonna get mailed out on a postcard to all taxpayers. So like that's what that bullet point is. Just needs to have the levies set in there, basically.
So the, uh, so again, then you want your numbers by March fifth or before or?
So I'd have to have our levies set in there.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes. Alright. Alright.
And we already know what our general basic and rural basic levies are, because that's set by the state based upon our tax evaluation. So, the only ones that we'd be able to switch would be the general supplemental or add a rural supplemental if we had to, but I don't, you're not being ignorant now.
And you're, the, actually yesterday, the, the carryover on the general and the rural are, you wanna call what those are?
Um, I wanna say it was thirty-two percent for the general basic and the general supplemental, I, was twenty-five percent.
So we're, we're in the area that we want.
Yeah.
Alright. So, in regards to the, kinda, I don't wanna just have the whole conversation. So is it, if, if, any questions about the budgets, the board members do, or I don't wanna just dominate this thing, so?
Well, I have something to say in regards to the Planscape Partners and the surplus tip, which we set as available. So I did get a second opinion from a tip attorney, which is John Danos. He's an expert in the, had a conference with him and I run over the numbers with him. Like, they said we have a unobligated tip of five hundred forty-eight thousand, whatever. This year, next year will be three point five million. That is, that tip is obligated. It's obligated to pay the bonds that are currently out there. You tip either one of two ways. You either certify on your tip every year and you capture what tip you need to pay your bonds for that year, or you capture all you can and it builds in your fund. But that fund is to pay your, your bonds that are still out there. So it's not, it's not an unobligated tip. It's already obligated to pay those bonds. The fifteen, sixteen million, whatever there is out there. So each year it's gonna keep building until you, you go over that point. So this unobligated tip is obligated. It's not available according to him. And that's his business, so I mean, that's what he does.
Okay.
So.
Okay. When, when we hired Planscape, they went through the, our finances and they do this for, for other people also. And I, I totally respect Darcey Whitney and John Danos. So I'm not, I'm not digging on them at all.
No, they're, that's what they do.
But John Danos is a bond, uh, bond counselor. And John Danos deals with, if you're gonna borrow money, that's what he's involved with. If we're gonna be borrowing money, we go to Northern Securities and John Danos in order to do what we need to do. Again, I'm not digging on him at all. But what we're doing is not through IO code four oh three or four oh four. Four oh three has to do with, uh, blunt, blight, slum and urban renewal. We're doing this through economic development. Where, where, there's a process that we're going through in order to make this work, where you designate these, whatever we're gonna fund, you designate them as an economic positive impact to the county. So when John Danos speaks, he speaks as a bond counsel attorney in regards to what his business is. Now, we hired Planscape in order to go through all of our finances and, and John Danos is not, again, I'm not, not pounding on it here, but he is not a number cruncher. And he's, that's what Northern Securities does, what Planscape Partners does. And there's, there's different roles that everybody plays. My purpose with, with Planscape Partners is to have a financial advisor that we could use to guide us as far as how we can spend our money, advise us how we can do these types of things. Northern Securities used to do that, they still do that. But since they deal with securities, and Jeff Oily told me this himself, they reach a certain point where they do not become the advisor anymore because they have to sell the securities. So, my thought was we have financial planners as a separate entity. We have people that sell us securities, we have bond counsel that advises us legally for the loan. Now, Planscape went through all of this, they crunched the numbers, they do this with other entities. This is, this is not something new that we're pioneering.
Yeah, they have this money on their, this is from Planscape Partners, unobligated tip. They have all these numbers in there. That tip is obligated, it's not unobligated tip. Well, I don't, the half a million, I told him and he said, no, that's obligated to the current bonds you have. Okay, that's what that is for, that's, is to, is to be there. Cause you can't, well, he said, he gave an example of, what if the windmills, also in the state says, windmills will have to pay half the property tax, they're paying them now. Well, then you're gonna be in trouble because you're unob, what you call, what they call unobligated tip, if that's not there, how you gonna pay your bonds? That's what it's there for.
Agreed, you could, you could have a lot of what ifs.
Well, I know now, like, he's just saying that, that unobligated tip is obligated, it's not available.
Okay.
I don't know.
Can you jump in a minute?
Yeah, sure.
I listened to the phone call. You can certify any projects that were discussed. You can certify those and you can use those, they become obligated and you can use that money next year.
Okay. So, I've just said that, so I'll say it maybe a little bit different way, but I think it's the same thing, correct me if I'm wrong. So you need to certify any debt that we have in December. And if, and that's part of this idea I have as far as these people advising us. We go through things that we want to possibly fund. We agree on, we, the majority of us agree on what we wanna do. That, those things become part of what you are going to certify as the debt that we're going to have. So they are captured and become certified.
Right.
Okay. So, to answer the question about, we don't have any unobligated tip, I don't know how to answer that because if, if I was an expert and knew everything about this, we wouldn't need anybody to advise us or do anything because we'd all be able to do it on our own. But we hire people, I don't know this and neither do you people. Nobody in this room knows all that stuff. That's why you hire people to do things for you. Planscape has done that for the city of Osage, maybe do that for another, another large amount of entities that they work for. So to answer that question, I can't answer that question. But I know they, they utilize that same thing for these other entities, they do the same thing. That's the only way I can answer that.
Yeah, I know, but then there is no tip police out there that says you gotta do it this way or that way. But somebody can do it if you don't do it right. That's why, I would just wanna say with a legal counsel.
The Department of Management will oversee everything that happens.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so just so I understand what you're maybe talking about, maybe I can understand a little bit better. You're saying that the bond, that extra money is obligated to pay bonds or pay the debt?
Pay as in this current debt, the bodies that are-
What I'm kind of gathering is that, I'll put it in terms that I'm merely, we can make a change order to our urban renewal plan to add more to that debt, so then that unobligated money is then now obligated to pay that debt. That's maybe where the unobligated and obligated is confusing? Is that how I'm understanding it? So we're just amending our plans, but that money can be obligated even though it already is. We're adding more to that debt, the, I wanna say debt, we're adding more to those, the, we're adding more money in there, or more projects, more debt, I guess is the only word you can use. So that money can be used to do projects, is that how I'm understanding it?
You're adding more things than the thing, you're adding more-
Right, so you can utilize that money.
So you can utilize the money.
Yes.
The tip money can only be used for whatever in that plan.
Right, right.
By changing the urban renewal plan and putting more products in it, then you can utilize that half million, the three point six-
Correct.
For those projects. But they have to be with, inside that scope in order to do it. So you can adjust your plan whenever you want. So, yeah, that three point six can only go or half million, wherever it has to go, but it has to end the plan. Right now, you know, you can add more plans so it can be utilized to do those things.
Urban renewal and make a, uh, economic impact in Mitchell County.
No, I get it, I'm just saying that what we're doing is we're modifying the plans so you can utilize that money that's obligated to pay those bonds. I'm, I'm, in, in my mind, it's a change order.
And in this, in this, in the way this is happening, we're not borrowing money to make this happen.
Right, right.
So, to answer your question, Mike, in regards to it being obligated, if, if it's not, I don't have a great answer for it, but if, if you're saying all this money that he is, that our Planscape was saying is unobligated, if it's becoming unobligated, why is it building and not paying off current bonds?
And it could be if they, if they're callable early, you can do that. But you capture tip two way, either you certify every year and you capture what you need, the rest rolls over into the general fund like all our other property taxes do, or you collect all you can to get to your sixteen million sooner, so you don't, so you're not taking a risk. So you have the money to pay the debt. That's the way he explained it. You're doing it one of two ways. Mitchell County apparently is, Osage does it, they certify their debt every year, that's how much tip they capture. They pay their debt with their tip captured. We're, we're capturing all we can to get to that fifteen or sixteen million to pay that debt, is the way he, he explained it.
Okay.
Kind of been a little long. Okay, so, kind of said it right. Um, Osage, it's all about your debt limit, how much debt you can have. So they are certifying so much every year for what they have to pay, but they are physically collecting everything they can get. So they aren't just collecting what they have for those payments, they are collecting everything that they can get from their debt.
Right, but you're cool.
So, Mitchell County is doing the same. We, we are collecting everything we can get that is above and beyond our physical payments for that specific year. We are not collecting more than what we have certified.
No, because we're not at the, the sixteen million.
Right, but like Osage, they're, they do theirs different. They are certifying what their payments are for their different projects. They physically collect everything they can get, rather than who are paying it out. I don't know how they pay it out. But I do know that they collect everything that they can get every year.
He says they are collecting what their debt is.
They are, that is not interesting.
Well, you know, the thing is, nothing against John Danos again, but a phone conversation with him is, he does not have a lot of documents in front of him as far as this conversation. So, he's a lawyer and he's also going to answer in a way that's not gonna get himself in trouble. And he doesn't know everything that is, is going on, that's no fault of his. He doesn't know what's being proposed here. He doesn't necessarily know what's in Osage is doing, so-
Well, he said it does because he oversees Osage.
Okay.
We had a conversation with that ID, meaning wherever from Northern Securities, after I got that paper from, from partners, Landscape, whatever, and-
Landscape Partners, yeah.
And she didn't have, I gave her some of those numbers and she said that the next year would, we had six and a half million available?
No.
Three point, come out and get three point five.
Three point five?
Well-
She didn't think we'd have that much to go in debt that far.
Three point five, physically you're twenty-five and then four million, physically you're twenty-six.
So she wasn't too keen on the idea when I talked to her, but that was just my conversation with her.
But we're not, we're not, we're not borrowing any money. That's just it, we're not borrowing money. It's money that's, it's above what our payments are already at. These are projects that I'm aware of, that, that's mine. You got one? You got one? Whether the board wants to do them or not, it doesn't matter, this is what I know. I wanted to thank for the county, to the county.
Sydney, are you still online? I think I sent this to you. I don't know if you have it in front of you, but, and no, you're not online.
I don't know if you have it in front of you, but, and no, you're not online anymore. Okay. So, this is broke down into, shows on top left fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, what's available. And the request dates of these departments, if they want to do this. Shows the department that is interested in wanting to do a project. Conservation has a roof that they wanna do, seventy five thousand dollar roof. I don't know if the, if the board wants to consider helping with the Fair Board building. It's down, just something to look at if we wanna help with that. Conservation is also short interest in upgrading some of its parks. But that's not all in one year. He did indicate that he would like to get the design and engineering going in regards to, for those parks. So, the fiscal years that it's applied to is over on the right hand side. So, that would be in that way. Put a million dollars in the budget, his budget in regards to possibly using these funds for, to help him with inadequate amount of money he gets currently for projects. That would be the FY twenty five funding. Again, the Fair Board enlisted again because I didn't know who would wanna do a down payment and then help with the balance after that or maybe not at all. And then Conservation, they're gonna be short on their River Trails project because of the prices, things that went up from what they originally got. They got a federal grant and this DNR also. So, those are just some ideas. And we don't have, this is not a discussion and action. I didn't put action on this. But I do wanna just be talking about this so we know what we're doing or not doing.
Like the Fair Board, that. I mean, they've got funding coming, they're, I mean, there's people that wanna sponsor a path. Grant wants to sponsor a path or, you know, everything.
That'd be great, yeah.
So, they wanna, they're gonna be doing a lot of that. I talked to one of them, they said they're, they're.
Real good.
So, I don't, that number's gonna be.
Well, that's fine.
It's certainly last, I would say.
I put the number down, you know, we have a, have a reference point, so.
Yeah.
This, this is not stuff that is locked in or whatever. But it's gotta start somewhere, so.
That they're, they're planning on doing, doing what they get.
All right.
Considering less, I would think.
So, I'm gonna read something, just information. Then he got ahold of Ron Fiskus yesterday. This has to do with how we are doing this. His answer is, Chapter fifteen A provides for cities and counties' ability to provide funded economic development grants to various entities under certain conditions that are spelled out in that code chapter. Landscape Partners is not paid for its services through a fifteen A grant. Paid for our services is a legal allowed administrative expense as provided for in Chapter four oh three of the Iowa Code. In various places in four oh three, the allowed tip eligible types of actions and expenses are listed. The first half of that statement defines, we are not using four oh three. Four oh three pays for their services, but we're doing this through economic development, which is Chapter fifteen A. We are not borrowing money. So. I just wondered if that's on here so we could start.
Yes. Talking about Osage and what they were collecting and what they were doing. I'm assuming they do it similar to what we do. We use a rebate plan. All the taxes are collected from the companies that we extend tip to. And every year, we rebate the money that the city would've got back into the company. That's how our little city can help promote economic development in our town. It's a rebate program. The taxes are always collected and then rebated. Instead of the city using the money, we give it back to the business.
Okay. So, they do it a little differently. This is when, I contacted them in October, start, September actually, to start this process. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of emails. There's been a lot of work to get to this point that we're doing this. It's not just something that has been dreamt up and whatever. So, I missed, my initial contact to him was, what can you do for us for different types of things? Here's an answer from Jim, the daycare assistance, and it had to do with daycare when daycare was, when economic development was wanting funding for what the coalition program is about. It starts there. The daycare assistance seems like a great program that was developed by the Iowa Health and Human Services Department. But the challenge is that it is a one time matching grant. So, after the year of funding from this program, the daycares are back to square one on finding ways to give reasonable raises to employees. So, there's a discussion about finding ways to continue some form of assistance into the future. I'm getting to the point, this is not, daycare is not my point, but daycare is important, but it's not my point. Osage has provided assistance to the Osage Community Daycare for more than a decade. It first took the form of a fifteen thousand dollar contribution per year to help make mortgage payments on their old building. When the new building was built, the city issued a bond to provide seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for the construction of the new facility. In each case, these forms of assistance were made using tip funds under the terms of Chapter fifteen A, which is economic development of the Iowa Code, tying provisions of quality daycare facilities to economic development strategies and defining these, these as a public purpose. So, there's two numbers in there that he talks about. The fifteen thousand dollars by three years was not a loan that they took. It was unobligated tip money that they used for that purpose. The seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, yes, they, they did a loan. They bought a GEO bond to do that. Two ways you can do things. As far as the loans, you can have an interim loan. You can go, you can buy a GEO bond or you can go to a bank and get a loan. That's Iowa Code four oh three. We're not doing that. We're doing Iowa Code fifteen A, which is economic development. Last paragraph. It is, it is this level of knowledge about tip law and the creative thought we've been able to apply to the legal use, the legal use of tip over the years that has allowed Osage to do a lot of creative programs and projects. We would welcome the opportunity, we would welcome the opportunity to apply that creative once again, that creativity once again to Mitchell County. So, to answer your question, Dean, they do it a little differently. Not that the church is wrong, but what, what we're doing is, is being done other places. So, that's my point. Go ahead.
Oh, since we're talking about this, I received this in the mail from a concerned citizen and, I know they're a retired county worker. And it said, since two thousand, total property taxes collected in Iowa have increased one hundred nineteen percent, more than the increase in population inflation and the cost of living adjustment for social security. Iowans across the political divide in both rural and urban communities are demanding property tax relief and challenging local government officials excuses for not lowering property tax bills. Economic growth, it says, by limiting property tax increases, the spending cap can create more favorable environment for economic growth and business development. Lower property taxes help attract businesses and encourage investment in housing. So, by, by getting rid of, if we got rid of all the tip debt, we'd have a lot more property, we'd get a property tax relief by approximately twenty five percent. I know you always say that's not true, but can you explain to me why it's not true?
Because the, the schools levy for approximately forty five percent of that property tax. Excuse me, you asked me a question, so I'm gonna answer your question. The schools levy for about forty five percent of that property tax bill. And if, if everything was in the system, the schools are not gonna lower their levy rate of that forty five percent. And they're getting back the eighty seven and a half percent of that forty five percent currently. So, the, the schools, not picking on schools, but the schools levy for the most of our property tax bill. They're not gonna lower their levy rate just because there's more money coming in, in the whole system. So, that twelve percent, that twenty five percent is just based on the value that the turbines are in this county. It's not that it's gonna lower our taxes twenty five percent because of the school factor.
But if you have twenty million dollars coming into the county as property taxes, also you have another five million coming in, that's a twenty five percent increase.
Correct.
Twenty five, five million of them. Okay, so that's where I'm getting my twenty five percent increase coming in.
Correct.
So, all of a sudden you got a twenty five percent increase, why can't you lower property taxes? You got that much more money coming in and I realize the schools getting, they're getting it no matter what, so. But, but the increase in the total evaluation is twenty five percent of these numbers. You know, that's, that's the way I'm looking at it.
So, so noted.
So noted, yeah. That's what, whoever, the guy that took this is.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Is that all I had?
Personally, if we can make this happen, I don't wanna sit idle. I, I do not wanna sit idle. I don't, I don't agree with if we pay off all those bonds and we sit idle, don't do anything. People aren't coming to Mitchell County anyway. They're not gonna move here just because of the property taxes. We're like Jim said, we're not gonna lower it.
Why?
And we'll do our best to keep it.
Other, other.
Keep it in line. This is not good. So, I don't wanna sit idle. I'm, I'm ready to give people to Mitchell County. And I think Landscape Partners is gonna make that happen. I don't see many Main Street buildings open in St. Ansgar or Osage. And I mean, we just gotta keep moving forward. That's just, I guess that's what my personal feeling is.
So, you don't think if everybody's property taxes went down twenty five percent, that would incur economic, that's gonna improve the economy for Mitchell County?
I think it's gonna take too long.
The farmers, they ever, you know, take too long, it'll take a matter of a few years.
The, that's too long. The county, the county should not just be a place, should not, what I call it is be a workhouse where you just work in this county and that's all you do. You should be able to have things in this county that people enjoy to do. And when you do that, it's not only benefit for the people that are working here, but it's also attraction for people from outside of this county to come here. Maybe wanna live and possibly if they don't wanna live here, definitely spend their money. So, the way our budget system is set up with the levy rates that we have, there's no way that we can invest adequately to make this a better environment. I will use the conservation's, when they're planning their five year plan to upgrade all their parks. There's no way we would be able to pay for that. No way, the way our, we're barely able to make our budget this year and we're struggling with the rural basic. This is going to make our rural basic work. But a project like that, it ain't gonna happen. You, there's no way you'd be able to do things to make this county better, to attract people to come here. This is a funding source that we can use to make that happen. I strongly believe in it, but so, to just lower property taxes, it's not gonna get people to come here. It's definitely not gonna get people to come here and spend their money. It's, it's a vicious cycle and I don't like paying property taxes either. Nobody in this room does, but it pays for services. That's, it's a simple fact, yes.
Well, you've got ag land assessed out there with so many dollars in it, right? Now, you take that and you put thirty year houses on it, what is your tax asking? Looks like you're on the developer.
Agreed.
Unless there's a pay plan under it.
Well, we can't play, like, land.
Oh, yes, we can.
Yeah, I just wanted people to have an idea of these projects and I just wanted to have some discussion and. Anything else people have? We'll move on to meetings attendance. I have none.
I had a central Iowa juvenile detention center. I'm working on updating the handbook. We are, updating on law enforcement costs. Might reimburse them for pepper spray when they come in to the facility all the time. Riots and whatever. I think the audit starts next week and we had an election of new officers for the, for our median structure. That's what I had.
I had a county social service meeting. Legislation last year made us go, we're, we're twelve counties in our county social service. And they made us go from the twelve people voting down to six. And they brought in a law enforcement and a medical professional. So, we had to, January first, we swapped the alternates, you know, voting members and the voting members and all the alternate people. And now the legislature is redoing the map of social services. And the way the map looks, we're gonna be going over the west with Cerro Gora County, that's employed county, getting removed from that district, going to another one if it goes through. And somebody looked at the map, it's the same map, it's the DOT map. DOT is in six districts in Iowa. And the way it's looking, it's going in that same map.
So, it'll be negative that we'd be associated with a bigger Cerro Gora's more urban. Is that a negative for us?
Ninety nine counties divided by six. They'll take out the most popular ones in Des Moines and, but yeah, it's. It's not a danger.
Who, who decides who the voting members are and who the voting members aren't? You said that goes down too, right?
Yep, we went from twelve down to six. We, they teamed it up with the county you're next to. So, us and Crestle are teamed up.
Okay.
So, he's a voting member now and I'm the alternate.
I see.
Way that, that's a choice, there's no one, somebody said they're gonna make Iowa into six counties.
That wouldn't surprise me.
That would be interesting, that six board supervisors in state Iowa.
Isn't it interesting that Des Moines, that legislature of Des Moines knows how to run the rural Iowa better than we do?
Yeah.
Ain't that interesting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't wanna ruin your day if it does, you know? And then Artland Insurance, we had a meeting, went through the budgets and our insurance rates. And the way the general public, your rates are going up twenty to forty percent when you're housing, health and property insurance. Where hopefully you can get a little lower than that. That's it?
I had none.
I had none.
Yes, yes.
Anyway, I'm in between. Did she stay with the office?
It's always.
I think they, uh, median is at the ten percentage, and then their, their plan is rated through, I don't know. Hardly, through city, they're up, state, so if they capture so many percent, the CO, then that knocks the, that they're putting down, it's going down so much that they get a power rating at the five.
Hello?